We're ready. Sorry I wasn't paying attention. Ready? Sorry about that, everybody. I kind of got lost daydreaming.
He was dreaming about Napoli's pizza.
I was. Burlington City Council Meeting Number 47. It's December 1st already, 2025, 5:30 PM, here in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chamber, City Hall, 400 Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa. Would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America
Start over.
Start over.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wake up.
Five years old, I guess. Nightmare. It's really bad. Sorry, folks. Roll call, please. This started again.
Graham Murray?
Here.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Here.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Here. Okay. Well, that almost restarted the same way, too. Okay. First up, we have a proclamation. This is for Human Rights Day, and it was asked for by the Human Rights Commission. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Human Rights Day is observed annually on December 10th to commemorate the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the United Nations General Assembly in 1948, and whereas the City of Burlington affirms the inherent dignity and equal rights of all people and recognizes that the strength of our community depends on ensuring fairness, inclusion, and opportunity for every resident; and whereas the City of Burlington is committing or committed to fostering an environment where all individuals, regardless of race, color, creed, national origin, religion, age, disability, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity, are treated with respect and have equitable access to housing, employment, education, and public life; and whereas it is more important than ever for local communities to reaffirm their commitment to protecting and advancing human rights for all people; and whereas Human Rights Day provides an opportunity to reflect on progress made, acknowledge the work still ahead, and celebrate the residents, organizations, and public servants who work each day to uphold civil, uphold human rights and civil rights in Burlington. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2025, as Human Rights Day in Burlington, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing this day by renewing our shared commitment to equality, inclusion, and protection of human rights for all. Signed and sealed this first day of December 2025, Katie Music attesting as City Clerk, signed by John D. Phillips, Mayor." And I don't think we have anyone here. Stephanie, I'll come up.
Would you express our gratitude for human rights?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Now, next up would be comments from the audience. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment they'd like to bring before council, that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. Approach the lectern, give us your name, address, and thing you'd like to discuss.
Susan Van Pelt, 1037 North 7th. And first of all, I apologize for not being here last time. I forgot. Wednesday. Also, I read Mr. Bird's article in the Cityscape, and I thought it was fascinating that Burlington, West Burlington, were talking together. And are you the Street Department's general?
Yep.
I think they did a great job on the streets. Downtown and the hills are just lovely. Thank you very much. Hard work. Also, I got a chance to go with Aldalia pulled sixth graders to the Burlington High School swimming pool. That's Tuesday. And it just, there's always signs out there for you. And so my sign that day was how much I believe in a pool, that's a regular pool, with a diving board. Because approximately, I tried to estimate and count, there was 60 sixth graders. And out of the 60 sixth graders, only 15 could go the length of the pool, the width of the pool. The rest of them, dog paddling, touching the ground and everything else. Out of those 15, those 15 got in the line to jump off the diving board. And I thought, those are signs. To me, we have to have those things. So, anyway, thank you, and I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving. Take care of each other and see you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately later tonight. On the consent, we have minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports, and bonds. We have five resolutions. First resolution is approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second resolution is approving the purchase of golf carts for Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. Number three is a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Agreement for Resource Enhancement Protection and Protection Re Fund Project, constructing a Dankworth Park Trail Connector Phase. That would be Phase 1. Number four is a resolution approving resignations and appointments to the homelessness task force. And number five is a resolution approving a sanitary sewer connection outside the corporal, corporate city limits pursuant to the City Burlington, to Burlington City Code, Section 95.08. And lastly, setting the date for a public hearing, December 15th, 2025, which will be a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 50, Public offenses, for the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like one of these items removed and discussed later? Seeing none, council? Anyone have an item they'd like discussed in a little more detail?
I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda.
Second? Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes. Okay. That's approved. Moving on to hearings. First is a consideration of sale of property, locally known as 1435 Tool Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
This property is located at the corner of Oak Tool and Ganon Street. I'll pull up a flyer here on it as well. It is a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-story, single-family home with one bedroom, about 1,200 square feet of living space. We currently have one bid for the property, Plowman Properties, of 2011 South 4th Street, in the amount of $500. Home has to meet similar requirements as previous. Shall be rehabbed to minimum housing standards prior to occupancy. All permits shall be received within 60 days, and work shall be substantially completed within 180 days of approval, with an extension maybe granted with significant progress made. Other items: Public sidewalks shall be repaired as necessary. Off-street parking shall be provided with two, minimum of two spaces. Repair and replace the siding and windows on the home, and ensure that licensed contractors do all required work. I think this is a very nice home, but I think the one-bedroom probably deterred a couple other bidders on it, but does have a second-floor loft, but just doesn't meet the standards for bedroom per rental code, so. Plowman Properties has been through the home and communicated with our inspectors as where of all the requirements, and I guess expressed their interest in it today.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience has any thoughts, concerns, or would like to bid on the property? Seeing none. Counsel, any thoughts or concerns? Motion?
Your Honor, motion to close.
Second.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1435 Tool Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Do I need to put the name in there?
I need to amend it to include the name and price. Plowman Properties LLC at $500.
And make a motion to...
Do you need that? How do you want me to say that?
Yeah. Make a motion. There's a paper in your folder. Sorry. Sorry, there isn't. Just make a motion to approve it to them.
Do I do that bef...
Yeah, do that first, and then we'll...
Do that, then go back and make the other motion.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the sale of property to Plowman Properties LLC, Burlington, Iowa, for the amount of $500.
Second. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. And then the resolution to approve the sale?
Yep.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of locally known as 1435 Tool Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second. Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Now ordinances, please.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located along Sunnyside Avenue, west of Melvin Avenue, from Residential Zoning District to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there any in the audience that has any thoughts or concerns about this particular rezoning? No? Counsel? Mr. Bird?
Was there any changes?
Eric has comments if you need any background.
Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. No changes from the previous reading. Would include the two properties there off Sunnyside and Memorial Park Road.
Counsel, any thoughts or concerns? Is there a, do we, did we talk about waiving this?
You can wave, turn it up.
Okay. Is it, is there a motion to waive?
Linda has this one.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending. Is that it?
No.
No.
Give it away, the second.
Is it this one?
Yep.
Yep. Read that section, please.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located along Sunnyside Avenue, west of Melvin Avenue, from Residential Zoning District to C1 Limited Zoning District, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning a property located along Sunnyside Avenue, west of Melvin Avenue, from Residential Zoning District to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts from the audience? Concerns? Any additional thoughts or concerns with counsel? Let's vote on the amendment.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Aye.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. And now vote on as amended.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Next one, please.
Your Honor, I have a motion for a preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154, Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Ms. Tisland?
No changes from previous reading. These next, just number of code changes are updating to the 2024 International Codes. This allows the city to stay up to date with the state of Iowa and their adoption of these codes under State Code, Chapter 103A, State Building Code. So, just following suit with the state of Iowa. And then there are some minor amendments in there to reflect some of the section changes and different numbering under those code changes. And then, as one of our building inspectors went through previously, just some other minor changes to stay current with requirements.
Okay. Sounds good. Does anyone in the audience have any thoughts or concerns? Input? Seeing none. Counsel, any thoughts or concerns? Input? Is there a motion to waive? An amendment?
Linda's got this one, too.
Yes. Your Honor, I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or concerns about the amendment? Seeing none?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now as, vote on as amended.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number three, please.
Yes. I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 155 International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Tisland?
Same as previous section.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience, thoughts or concerns? Counsel? Is there a motion to waive?
Yes. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located along Sunnyside Avenue, west of Melvin... What? Am I reading it wrong? Look at 155. Did I get it mixed up?
155, yeah.
Oh, gosh. I thought I was doing so good. Kind of mixed up. 155. Here it is. That's correct. Try to cross them off, too. Okay. I stand corrected. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 155 International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 155 International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have any thoughts or concerns on the amendment? Seeing none. Vote on the amendment.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now as amended, please.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now, number four.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 159 Mechanical Code of the City of Burlington.
156. 156.
156.
You're taking after me, Kay.
I don't have one problem.
That's enough tonight.
It's third, not in order.
I don't have it.
Nope.
I don't have it.
Hold on, I got you.
Well, you want to read it off your normal agenda first for the first one, and then read the amendment. Okay.
Let's read this first. Yeah. That first.
Okay. For preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 156 International Existing Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Tisland?
Same as previous ordinance, updating to current code.
Okay. Any thoughts or concerns? Is there a motion to amend?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 156 International Existing Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 156 International Existing Building Code City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or concerns on the amendment? Hearing none. Vote on the amendment, please.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now vote as amended.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number five, please.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Eric?
Updating to current code years.
Thoughts or concerns from the audience? Is there a motion to amend?
I think so. Mine were in Antonio.
Oh, that's why you swapped seats, didn't you? Tracy, this will be thrilling news for tomorrow. Yes. A great, a grace, a great piece of housekeeping for tomorrow's news story.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
All right. Any thoughts or concerns on the amendment by audience or counsel? Can we vote on the amendment, please?
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now, as amended?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number six, please.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington.
Eric?
Get into current code here. Eric said no change. Tim seconded it. Any thoughts or concerns? Audience or counsel? Is there a motion to waive?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code, to read as follows: For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Any thoughts or concerns by audience or counsel about the amendment? Hearing none. Can we vote on the amendment?
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Any thoughts or concerns by audience or council about the amendment? Hearing none, can we vote on the amendment?
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number seven?
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 159 Mechanical Code of the Burlington, City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Eric?
No changes?
No changes, okay. Any thoughts or concerns by anyone in the audience or from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to, wait, amend?
Yes. Your, your honor, I have a motion to amend for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of 159 Mechanical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For the waiver of preliminary consideration adoption for the second reading, is for the final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 159 in this mechanical code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or concerns from the audience or council on the amendment? Hearing none, can we vote on the amendment, please?
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Now, vote as amended, please.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number eight, please.
Your honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code, the code of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Eric, or would that be Chief?
No changes.
No changes? Okay, any thoughts or concerns, audience or council? Is there a motion to amend?
Your honor, I have a motion to amend the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the City of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For the waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, for the final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or concerns on the amendment by council or the audience? Hearing none, vote on the amendment, please.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Got through that. Okay, now for something totally different. Resolution?
Your honor, I have a resolution for approval of the preliminary plat of Memorial Meadow Subdivision.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
This plat went to the City Planning Commission on October 28th, and they voted three to zero with two abstaining to recommend approval of the preliminary plat as shown with conditions and based on the subdivision construction and subsequent final plat meeting the minimum city standards of Section 170, 80, 800 of the Burlington City Code, which applies to subdivisions. This applied to the right-of-way and paving of the road, particularly the paved road width of 27 feet and cul-de-sac of 80 feet in diameter paved turnaround. This recommendation was based on the plat review of city departments, including Public Works, Community Development, and Fire Department, emergency response, and the close proximity to city limits as outlined in the conference of plan, urban growth area. So, this is outside the city limits in the two-mile area, and even though it is outside the city limits, they fall within Burlington's state authorized two-mile subdivision review area, which gives the city a role in planning and approving new subdivisions near its boundaries. A couple of key points of that is protecting future urban development, areas that could be annexed in the future as Burlington grows. Roads aren't built to urban standards today. It is a more expensive and difficult proposition to do that at a later time, particularly with the right-of-ways. Also provides safe and reliable access, especially for emergency services, creates, prevents the creation of subdivisions directly near the city that don't meet city standards, especially if they are to be annexed, and coordinates the two-mile area to ensure that new development matches future land use plans. This area, as we discussed previously, is just outside the city limits. The areas in color here are the zoning districts. This area here in green is our one single-family residential, so just within a few hundred feet of the current Burlington city limits. So, again, this did go to the Planning Commission. They voted three to zero with two abstaining to recommend approval with these conditions that are noted on this plat here with the roadway width and the cul-de-sac width.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Anyone in the audience have any thoughts or concerns about the project? Come on up, name and address.
Yep. Good evening. Ryan Nagarakian Midwest Realty Group, 914 Suite 3, West Burlington, Iowa. We're the builder developer here of this six-lot subdivision, so we bought this property a little over a year ago and slowly rehabbing the old sundown apartments, and then taking the old par three golf course that used to be there and going to develop it into some nice houses. So, appreciate your guys' help and support in that.
Appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing for us. Anyone else, thoughts or concerns? Counsel, any thoughts or concerns? Let's vote.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Affirmative aye. Passes. Okay, that reaches the end of our agenda for the night. We'll go around and get last comments from department heads and then council. Eric, you're first up. Anything to develop?
Sound like the golf course put on a good event with the turkey trot Thanksgiving morning, so appreciate all the work that they did to put on that event for the community, and then also just thanks to Parks and Forestry staff. They do snow removal as well, particularly on a lot of sidewalks and areas around the community that people don't realize. So, thanks to them helping out in that endeavor as well.
Thank you very much. Katie, anything in the clerk's office?
Nope.
Chief Schaefer, Burlington PD.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to give a quick recap of this past weekend's snow event as it related to the Burlington Police Department. We were fortunate to only have five minor accidents within the city limits, issued 72 snow route citations, towed five vehicles off the snow routes, and assisted 15 motorists. This is on top of our regular calls for service. Just a reminder to the public, get the vehicles off the snow routes, and I anticipate the number of vehicles being towed off city streets to increase this week as we get into more of the neighborhood. So, if your vehicle's not running, get it out of there before we have to tow it, so.
And keep it off there until we cancel the
Cancel it.
Snow emergency, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Toops, anything tonight from the VFD? Great event the other day promoting those six people. Yeah, very nicely done. Stephanie, anything from finance? Tim, anything from wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't check your watch, that's awful fitting. If you would check your watch, I'm really worried you're gonna go off.
It had nothing to do with looking at the time.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to talk about somewhat of a mess that's down at our Market Street Lift Station. I don't know if anyone's noticed, and I can't believe I'm the first one to bring it up, but there's three pieces of prefabricated piping that have been sitting there since July. I haven't gotten around to storing them somewhere else, but now it's coming to a point where we will be installing that piping, along with some valve, valving, flow meter, and some other standard fittings into that lift station.
Okay.
That's, that was a fiscal year '26 CIP item, and the reason we waited this long to do it is because of the weather. Colder weather usually means a more consistent and lower flow rate, something that we can handle with a couple diesel pumps and for the bypass, in order to bypass the, what we'll be replacing. So, just wanted to bring that up. If anyone thought that was an unsightly mess, it won't be there much longer.
All right. Should anybody be concerned, any problems while you're doing the changeover? I mean, do you want us all not to flush downtown for a couple of days?
No, it'll, it'll all be fine. We'll may have to deal with some parking issues there.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, Tim. All right, and Sam, I don't know if I've had you up before, counsel. Do you have anything for the library today?
Yeah, Brittany suggested some things.
All right, good deal. Sam Watson, ladies and gentlemen, from the Burlington Library.
Hello, I'm Sam Watson, Public Services Manager at Burlington Public Library. Just as the weather can attest to, we're kind of in the thick of the holiday season, so Burlington Public Library will contribute to that with events this week. Living Windows happens this Thursday, I believe. It's all through downtown, but the library will also be a stop on the trolley that is going around, I understand, between 5:00 and 7:00, so variety of activities for that evening. There is our First Fridays program, that happens this Friday because it's the first one. It will be on Ukrainian traditions, and that goes from 10:00 to 11:00, so I think we have a speaker who kind of can speak to all those. And then on Saturday, again, monthly thing we offer is That's Yesterday's News with Terry Abreeze, and that's at 10:00 o'clock as well, and his is on, I believe, holiday headlines. I'm not quite sure all of that, but a lot of fun things that people can stop in and explore at the library, so thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, sounds good. Nick, Public Works. And while you're on your way up, I will wax on a little bit too about the
Game?
Public Works. No, no, I'm not gonna bring up the total destruction of the basketball in Iowa, I'm not gonna do that. I mean, I could, but I wouldn't bring it up. I think it was 40 to 16 or something like that.
Well, I
I mean, after a while, you kept, you quit keeping track of the score. No, I was going to compliment you and your staff on not only a great job cleaning roads and then cleaning up some of the side roads while we were all snuggling our beds. I appreciate you guys, your 24 hours of diligence, helping our city stay clean and looking good, and I know we can count on you again with this last little snow blast. So, great job to you and your staff.
Thank you. So, the snow season started a little bit sooner than maybe we had hoped for. There is a couple of outlying projects that kind of got caught in the way of it. We anticipate that if the weather should break here and don't get any more snow, the 800 block of Washington Street should be opening up, and then the DOT project on the bridge. I know that the paving is all done. They just simply need to do some cleanup work with signage and then cone removal. However, the Third and Washington intersection may take a little bit longer to get done. They had gotten the structures in for the storm sewer, but not ready for paving, so hopefully the weather breaks and we have some nicer weather than what we have currently. But, since we're on the topic of snow, appreciate your kind words. I know that we've got, we've got a crew that works 24/7, well, 12, two shifts, 12 hours. And, you know, the chief polluted a little bit of the snow routes. It's essential to get your cars off of the snow routes so we can properly push the snow. I have seen a little bit of flack going here or there, eight inches, or 10 inches in some cases in town, is more than we received all of last season. So, the first snow is always the roughest. People don't quite remember what it's like to have snow on the ground, so give us a little bit of time. We will get to every road, and if you feel we've missed it, simply place a phone call and we'll make sure that it's attended to, so. A snow emergency may go into effect tonight, depending on the accumulation amount, so it automatically goes into place at two inches.
I would also ask people to bear in mind that, you know, it's not like we keep our snowplow drivers just on a, in a, in a bus barn ready to go, and they don't do anything else. They're doing their normal jobs during the week, so, you know, we have to allow them time to do their jobs.
Yep. Yeah, so we have 15 people that work in that department that push the snow on the road, so we split them half and half, and so we only have seven vehicles out on the road pushing snow, and they have to refill with sand and salt, so. It does take some time, but we'll get there. We're not as quick, but we do definitely, we do a lot more work past the 12 hours that others may get their job done, so.
You guys are, guys and gals are appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about the game.
What's on your shirt? What's on your shirt? From my recent escapades on a tropical island, I decided to wear my shark shirt today. Sharks on the shirt. And I think last week has made me depressed when it comes to football. None of my teams, including my fake team that I try and manage, is of any note, so I think I'm gonna move on to basketball.
Okay, all right. Mr. Byrd?
That's awesome. Just a couple of things, thank you. Also, kudos to Chris Clementson and his stable of street folks. They do an amazing job, so. As I mentioned last time, Municipal Leadership Academy through the Iowa League of Cities is available for any elected municipal official. Tomorrow night, the Greater Burlington Partnership is hosting a public officials reception from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Arts Center, and I would make mention of the IPIP training, which is now a requirement under State Code. I have a public information board, open meetings, open records, training, and the City Clerk's Office has set some dates for that. So, if you think you need to get that or are interested, let us know.
Katie, if we had that training last year, we're still good?
You're good, yeah.
It's for newly elected or appointed, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure, I want to make sure we're not in the paper for IPIP. I like our clean record so far.
The counties taking their spot.
I know they are. We'll have to let them have it. All right, let's get final comments from, from counsel. Katie, did you have anything tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Mayor, I read with interest your response to people about the snow situation that we had in the streets, and I listened, I really read them very intently with the folks that would like to have us put more people on the streets. I thought, well, you know, if we had another about $160,000 for a dump truck and the, and the equipment, and then about another $100,000 to fund that person, and that's not salaries, that's the entire package, and that includes unemployment, et cetera, et cetera, so about $260,000 is what it would cost for us to get the streets done 30 or 45 minutes sooner. And then the other thing I thought of was, I thought of a way that would make it quicker, and in the end, I found out if you put me in charge, you would still be out there moving snow today. So, back off, give these people that have worked year after year after year with snow removal, plan after plan after plan, they're at their peak performance, to peak design, leave them alone and let them get their job done, and move your cars, and particularly on narrow streets and on cul-de-sacs, get them the heck out of the way so that I don't get calls from your neighbors complaining about your vehicle being in the road and them having to dump all their snow in front of their driveway. So, do your part and let's let them get it done.
And if you don't want to tag me on the holiday weekend so I don't have to get involved in that whole mess, I'd be appreciative too, so that's fine.
It's all yours.
That's right. Antonio, I got anything?
Sorry, chief. I actually finally moved it. I didn't want to get towed, but other than that, no, I have nothing.
Good, at least we don't have to die to do it. Linda, do you have anything to Mayor Protem?
Couple things. Um, I took advantage of the library's book sale, and oh my gosh, it's incredibly organized, and I have heard feedback from other people that go to book sales in other communities, how extremely organized and professional, and everyone is courteous. They, they boxed up my stuff for me, volunteered to take it out to my car, and I go, no, I'm, I'm okay. I lift weights, I'm okay. It was, it was really neat, and I encourage everybody to take advantage of the library book sale. It's really, I got some great reads I'm enjoying, it's awesome. I took advantage of Small Business Saturday. I think my husband and I were one of about five people down there. I love the snow, but it was great. So, be sure and patronize those downtown businesses, Burlington businesses in general, because they will take a hit without your support, and then that helps your neighbors and that helps everybody out, and we all win together. And then don't forget Living Wendy Windows, rather, this Thursday, 5:00 to 8:00.
Yeah, I would echo that. I was walking around on, on Saturday, the only problem was a lot of businesses were closed, so in my opinion, they could retry that this weekend. You know, coming to the defense of Downtown Partners in Burlington, Qantas, I was really looking forward to the parade this year. It looked like it was gonna be, be bigger and better than it has been in a long time. They had bands lined up and everything else, so, you know, I know everybody's disappointed it got canceled, but in the end, that was the right decision. But, as the night of Living Windows, we will also be lighting the tree that night, so anybody who wants to, come down at 5:15, between 5:00 and 5:15. Santa's gonna roll up, and you can just tell which of, which of the fat guys is gonna throw the switch. I'm honored to help him every year, and it's a great event, and this year, Santa's, Santa's winner of Wonderland will be down by the tree, so it's a great place to get some shots. Now with the snow, it's gonna make it even better. So, come on down, it'll be a little chilly, but bundle up, and I'm sure B.R.A. will be serving some hot chocolate and other hot beverages for those that want them. So, look forward to seeing you there. And with that, glad everybody had it safe and good, happy Thanksgiving, and looking forward to the Christmas holiday season. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Graham Murray?